Dr. Robinson?
Here.
Dr. Bump?
Here.
He's one after here. He's saying.
Here. Okay, adopt another agenda. Can we adopt another agenda?
I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
We're moving seven all in favor. There's five zero. Public comment, you don't have any?
No.
No public comment. Item five, recognition and presentation.
Item five point one, Mr. James and members of the board. We are excited to celebrate the Natchez Adams School District Board of Trustees being recognized as the school board of merit during the November seventeenth MSB Fall Leadership Conference. This honor was extended to our board for collectively earning one hundred and twenty-nine hours of MSBA-approved training. President Angus James was recognized as a premier circle honoree for earning thirty-seven point five hours. Secretary LaWanna Renee Ware was recognized as a premier circle honoree for earning thirty-nine point five hours. And I was recognized as a master circle honoree for earning twenty-nine point five hours. So we extend our kudos to this board for making certain that they are, that you are well-trained, well-informed, so that the decisions that you make are in the best interest of the students of Natchez Adams School District. So we applaud you. Thank you.
You should have a little distinct on the one.
She'll be lucky more.
If I'm good at this, I'm gonna go play.
Yeah.
I was trying to get, do a little payback, but it don't do much.
Five point two.
Good afternoon, Mr. James, members of the board, Ms. McDonald. Item five point two is presentation for participation in the Natchez Ghana International Student Exchange Experience. The board is asked to approve the Natchez Ghana International Student Exchange Experience led by Natchez high graduates Larry Gliddon and Dr. Isaac DeDe. It's an academic immersion program scheduled for March sixth through sixteenth, twenty-twenty six. For this program, eight students, four from Natchez High, four from Natchez Early College Academy, will travel to Africa Ghana for an eight-day study abroad experience in partnership with the Ghana International School and Conscious Emergence Travel Group. Their program will expand students' global awareness, leadership, and STEM proficiency through project-based learning, strengthen alignment with Mississippi College and Career Readiness Standards, and promote cultural competency, include a pre-departure mini-course led by Professor Larry Gliddon focusing on culture, money, language, and food, and provide filling profit scholarships to offset fifty to sixty percent of the student's travel costs. Mrs. Gliddon did provide a detailed proposal for this request, and it's the recommendation of the superintendent that the board of trustees approve participation in this experience and authorize staff to proceed with student selection, fundraising, and travel preparations for March twenty-twenty six. And I do have Ms. Campbell, she's on Zoom, if you all have any questions about these proposals.
What's the bottom line?
So the bottom line is, we are proposing a study abroad program where eight of our Natchez Adams School District students will be able to travel to Ghana to participate in study abroad.
And what's the cost overall?
So the overall cost per student is roughly...
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-two, yeah.
Total cost for the trip in total for eight students in one chaperone is twenty-eight thousand three hundred and five. So the funding, they're going to work to offset the costs to students as much as possible, but there still will probably be some expense towards...
That the students will pay themselves.
Will pay fundraisers or so forth.
So this is something you...
Yes, sir. We've never done this before.
So...
All in baby.
When is, what, when is this supposed to take place?
From March sixth through twen- uh, sixteenth, twenty-sixth.
Uh, next year.
Yes, next year, from March twenty-sixth.
Well, and the other thing is to make sure we're covered for liability.
Yeah, obviously.
March twenty-sixth. March sixteenth.
Insurance and all.
You say March sixteenth.
You know, travel for all things and throws it in a different category. It's our line to let it go.
They're not driving on you.
And we will keep the board updated with progress towards fundraising and so forth. And of course, if there, if we need travel advice that's concerning, then we will make certain that we keep an eye on those things.
Okay. Item number six, approve October twenty-one, twenty-twenty-five special call meeting minutes and approve October twenty-one regular meeting minutes. Can we get approval?
I move for approval, uh, October twenty-one special call and October twenty-one regular minute.
Okay. Been moved in seven all in favor. And pass is five zero. Okay, consent item. Can I get approved for that? Is anything to be changed to accept item?
So move.
Been moved in seven all in favor. And pass is five zero, eight point one.
Good afternoon, Mr. James, members of the board, Ms. McDonald, Assistant Superintendent Mr. Field and Dr. Morrison, Mr. King. On the hand of the superintendent, the Office of Human Resources is presenting the Personnel Board Report for Thursday, November twentieth, twenty-twenty-five. You have before you the Personnel Board Report, vacancy list, and FYI information. Are there any questions in regards to any other parts of the report?
No. Been moved in seven all in favor. And pass is five zero, eight point two.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the board, superintendent, assistant superintendents. You have before you item eight point two, which is the approval of the claims on its acceptance of the financial reports. Withend the information sent are the claims for October twenty-fourth and October seventeenth and October third, twenty-twenty-five. Additionally, the October twenty-five financial reports and the Department of Spentiture Budgets were included also. If there are not any questions, it is the superintendent's recommendation to approve the aforementioned documents and accept the required financial reports that's presented to the board for you.
Okay.
Second.
Been moved seven all in favor. There's five zero, thank you. Eight point three.
Good afternoon, again, Mr. James, members of the board, Ms. McDonald. The Natchez Adams School District seeks for approval to contract with Illumination Prep LLC to provide ACT prep and student remediation services for students at Natchez High School and Natchez Early College. If there are not any questions, it is the recommendation of the superintendent to enter into a service agreement with Illumination Prep in the amount of thirty-two thousand five hundred for ACT prep and remediation services for the twenty-five twenty-sixth school year.
Is this something we've done?
We have not done it in the past, but one of the areas of the strategic plan has been working to increase those ACT scores for our students because we've been flat for about two or three years. So what we recognize is we have to have a strategic plan. We have to have a plan in place of how we're going to move because we can't wait for children in eleventh grade to try to move to new, we have to start early. And so we are working with this company with the hopes of having that comprehensive plan. She has worked with schools in the Jackson area. Her own daughter scored thirty-four, thirty-five on the ACT recently. She's one of our students, and so she is willing to come into assistance with this process.
And let me say this, test prep can do a whole lot for that student that just is a good student, but just is not a good test taker. And this is the advantage that other parents pay for themselves that can make all the difference in our students' ability to get scholarships and do things. I also think it gives them a good focus, especially, you know, kids that are college-bound, to know where they stand by taking those tests. So I move to approve this wholeheartedly and want to hear more, if you would, Heather. Keep us informed about how it's going.
And Ms. West just recently asked of today, the Mississippi Department of Education Board, the Mississippi State Board of Education approved the new accountability model for the state of Mississippi. And there is now what is called the readiness index that is heavily focused on ACT work, our keys, and dual enrollment. And so we have to make certain that we're doing everything we can to push forward as many children as possible. We know ACT is the one that takes.
What is the funding source?
Us. It's federal.
Federal.
All of this, all of this federal?
This is federal, yes, sir.
Okay, all in favor. And pass is five zero. Okay, eight point four.
Eight point four is a recommendation that the board approves the MOU between Natchez Adams School District and Allcorn State University for positive action evidence-based primary prevention program, recognizing that our students are dealing with some challenges, social-emotional regulation, being able to navigate, making positive, uh, good decisions when it comes to vaping and so forth. We recognize that we need to bring in some support in order to make sure that our children have the information that they need in order to make good decisions. And so it is the recommendation that the board approves this MOU between, with Allcorn State University.
So this comes from that area, so I'll have to ask that.
Okay.
I get a second. Been moved in seven all in favor.
What kind of causes there, the causes associated with this?
There's no conflict.
Eight point five.
Good afternoon, Mr. James, members of the board, Ms. McDonald. Agenda item eight point five is a request for approval of Major Clarity College and Career Platform. The Mississippi Department of Education mandates that all Mississippi schools develop individual plans to support students' college and career pathways. To fulfill this requirement, MDE utilizes Major Clarity College and Career Readiness Platform as a designated digital instructional tool. The Major Clarity Platform enables our students to connect their coursework to potential career paths, create personalized academic and career paths that are aligned with graduation requirements, and assess work-based learning opportunities such as internships and job shadowing. The platform's ultimate goal is to help students transition successfully from school to employment or post-secondary education. Additionally, Major Clarity provides valuable data analytics that allow school staff to monitor students' progress and offer targeted support in career planning and decision-making. This platform will be utilized by students in grade seven through twelve. The cost of it is six thousand dollars, and the funding source will be federal programs. It is the recommendation of the superintendent that NASD Board of Trustees approve Major Clarity description to assume by...
And it sounds like having that kind of funding could really boost success of the shift.
Well, who runs the platform, the platform? Who runs the platform?
What you mean, who runs it?
Well, you know, it's, it's, no, no, not here, but I mean, somebody...
MDE?
MDE's running it.
Well, it's, it's a platform...
MDE has contracted with the platform.
And they have been paying, right, and they have been paying for it, but now you know with all the money gone?
I got you.
Yes.
So they're pushing it back.
Now it's on the, it's on the...
But it is a platform that MDE has contracted with a company of service to have this platform. And is this part of that, that, what they kept talking about career getting, I mean, when the Department of Education came down and talked about their, we were a school to talk about majors and all of that, is that part of what?
Yes, that's a part of it, really, against the...
You're right, okay.
Right, and we have to, we are mandated to have plans, career pathway plans for every student.
Right.
You know, so they have a set, they take the yes, ma'am.
So it's a whole part of the state program.
And it starts at seventh grade.
Yeah.
And they go through this process of assessments and select.
I just want to be sure that they're, that they've checked out the platform because sometimes that stuff can not be not so great.
I think we've had, we've had it two years now with MDE paying for it, and now...
Are you happy with it?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Can you say six thousand dollars?
Six thousand. For grade seven through twelve.
All right. I move to approve it.
Okay, all in favor? And pass is five zero. Okay, eight point six. Does it, uh, get approved on November, what, the six, December the sixteenth? The move is meeting this September fifteenth?
Is that a Tuesday?
Yeah.
You say you're moving it to ten o'clock in the morning?
Yeah.
So move.
Now, wait a minute, wait a minute.
That's the regular thought being made instead of having it in the afternoon, at the morning.
You be all right. I know you're gonna be all right, I'm coming.
Well, I see you got a doctor.
You do, for real?
Yeah, so do I. So do I.
I can, I will change.
LaWanna and I and Angus will take care of everything, y'all gonna clean it up.
I'm gonna go clean it up. You're gonna go clean it up. Yeah.
Do it in eleven?
Can we do it at eleven?
Eleven thirty?
Yeah.
Eleven thirty?
Eleven thirty?
Then that'd be better because the doctors often sometimes...
Okay, let me do it at eleven thirty.
Eleven o'clock before.
You sure?
Yeah.
Eleven thirty would be better.
Eleven thirty.
Yeah, because I also have it.
Oh, you do?
I do too.
Okay.
I said eleven thirty, Sam.
No, but what did you want to say, her, that you was wanting for a month?
Well, she's going, you're going...
Oh, don't say that.
Can I motion the finger for eleven thirty?
You're going to see a flag.
Don't move. It's a man who doesn't have to make your meetings around doctors.
Okay, can I get a second?
I put age.
Can I get a second?
That's right, it's just like Dr. Bump.
Okay, is it, all in favor? Does anybody just go to the doc? Be here at eleven thirty. Free ancient moves. Eleven thirty, okay. Eight point seven.
Eight point seven, Mr. James and members of the board, is approval or acceptance of resolutions as part of the minutes for recently deceased employees who were active employees of the district. It has been an extremely challenging year throughout the district, and so I will read the resolution, I'll do them one by one.
Do we need to do them all, Campbell, do them all collectively after?
Yes.
Do we need to read them in the picture?
They did, they all say the same thing.
There's some differences, but yeah.
Yeah, the, uh, number two here.
I will, will bring one up. Natchez Adams School District Resolution in memory of Mrs. Belma Anderson Lee, whereas the Natchez Adams School District pauses with deep respect and heartfelt gratitude to recognize the life, legacy, and dedicated service of Mrs. Belma Anderson Lee, who faithfully served the children and families of this district for twenty-five years as an exceptional education teacher and case manager. And whereas throughout her distinguished career, Mrs. Anderson Lee demonstrated an unwavering commitment to her students, always striving to meet their unique needs with compassion, patience, and understanding. Her classroom was not merely a place of instruction, it was a sanctuary of encouragement, laughter, and hope, where every child felt valued, seen, and capable of success. And whereas her love for children was evident in all she did, from advocating tirelessly for their learning and well-being to celebrating even their smallest victories, she believed deeply in the potential of every child and was a model of what it means to teach with both excellence and heart. And whereas Mrs. Anderson's lead service extended far beyond the classroom, she was a mentor to fellow educators, a trusted collaborator, and a shining example of integrity and dedication to her calling. Her influence has rippled across generations of students and colleagues, strengthening the culture of care and compassion that defines the Natchez Adams School District. And whereas through her earthly journey, whereas though her earthly journey has come to a close, her spirit of joy, kindness, and unwavering faith will continue to live on in the hearts of those she touched and in the enduring work of the district she so dearly loved. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Natchez Adams School District Board of Trustees expresses its deepest appreciation for Mrs. Belma Anderson Lee's remarkable service and lasting contribution to the field of education and to the children of Natchez Adams County. And be it further resolved that this resolution be entered into official minutes of the board of trustees and that a copy be presented to her family as a permanent record of the district's gratitude, admiration, and remembrance for a life that so beautifully exemplified the heart of an educator. We also have a resolution of respect and honor for Ms. Lena Wilson, who faithfully served the district as a bus driver for eight years. Ms. LaShonda Renee Dixon Terrell, the district pauses to recognize the life and legacy of Ms. Dixon Terrell, a dedicated beloved member of our district who served the district for twelve years as a child nutrition bookkeeper, activity fund specialist. Resolution of respect and honor for Ms. Patricia Ann Jefferson. Ms. Jefferson faithfully served the district for ten years as a math teacher demonstrating exceptional attention, exceptional attention to detail, professionalism, and unwavering commitment to education. And so we ask that these resolutions be presented to their families but also entered into the official minutes of the board of trustees.
So move.
Second.
Been moved in seven all in favor. And pass is five zero.
Let me say this, I think you're gonna probably do this and wait, it will be framed and given a copy to the families.
Yes, sir.
Eight point eight.
Eight point eight, Mr. James, members of the board, seeking approval for overnight travel for the Natchez College Beta Club to the Beta Convention in February. So it will be paid through fundraisers and student community.
So move.
Been moved in seven all in favor. And pass is five zero, eight point nine.
Eight point nine, Mr. James, members of the board, seeking approval for use of facility, three uses for Natchez, the Natchez Middle School Cafeteria.
So move.
Been moved in seven all in favor. Eight point ten.
Eight point ten is a recommendation that the board approves memorandums of agreements between Natchez Adams School District and the Jefferson Comprehensive Clinic for school-based claims at McLaurin Elementary, Morgantown Elementary, and Natchez Smith School. As you all are aware, we have been in partnership with Jefferson Comprehensive Clinic for several years, and so this is just an update to those memorandums of agreement to provide services.
So move.
Been moved in seven, all in favor? And pass is five zero. Okay, eight point eleven.
Eight point eleven, Mr. James, members of the board, seeking permission to allow seats for access to Natchez Adams School District property to be on the middle school property, basically the parking lot area, they're gonna run five or two, the Jefferson Comprehensive Clinic. So seeking approval to allowing that access.
Okay, so move.
Been moved in seven all in favor. And pass is five zero.
Thank you, sir.
It's weird, well.
Eight point twelve is a recommendation that the board enters into lease negotiations with the city of Natchez Workforce Development for use of a portion of the Natchez Options Academy School Facility. We discussed this item last month. Previously, the request was for Robert Lewis to use the annex portion of that campus. However, due to some maintenance issues that we still have at that campus and with the desire to enter more workforce development programs in January, the request is to use portions of the Natchez Options Academy. The use of those buildings will not interfere with the services that we are currently providing at their location.
So move.
Been moved in seven all in favor.
So we're talking, Zander, we're talking about not only the classrooms inside, but the facilities we have outside in addition.
And that's obvious, it is the rear portion where the cafeteria went out the inside of the classrooms.
So we're, we're talking about entering into negotiation, we're not approving the lease at this point. So when we do, we have to make those findings that are required by statute. So we just, just make sure.
Eight point thirteen.
Eight point thirteen, Mr. James, members of the board, there is a request by the Golden Bridge Foundation to enter into consideration, to enter into a lease agreement for the use of a portion of Robert Lewis Middle School. Golden Bridge is a nonprofit organization that is in partnership with New Zion Chapter of Omega Psi Phi Fraternity, and they're seeking to lease a portion of that building in order to provide opportunities for youth, adults, and families in Natchez and surrounding communities. And so they end up, as a part of your board package, they presented their proposal. I see Mr. Scobie, eighty-eight, who is here in attendance.
Mr. Vaughn. Mr. Lawrence Vaughn. Mr. Vaughn.
Last name again?
Lawrence Vaughn.
Vaughn, Mr. Vaughn, thank you. They are here representing this organization in consideration. So you all have just some brief comments that you all want to make regarding your reports?
Vaughn is just trying to get back in those matches.
Just some dope man, true. Mr. Vaughn?
How you doing? Yeah, we would like to try to lease the building to do some things in the community, such as a community garden, and also add for some services to the youth. We spoke to several Mississippi entities, trying to provide meals for the kids during the summer, and some tutoring after school. It'll be a scalable deal. We'll start small and ask grants and stuff, come in, we'll increase our exposure in our programs.
Did you get a chance to look at the facility?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We looked at the annexed building, I believe, in the back, and we looked at the baseball field, which has a fence, which I think we can remove a little curve and, you know, the red everywhere.
I look forward to the garden myself, but I think it'll be good for the community.
Yes, sir.
Well placed.
So what we need, all we need to do is, I don't think we need to take any action except to direct our board of train together with the superintendent to get, work out the details and the different areas that you will be subject to leasing and that kind of thing. Would that be correct, Campbell?
Yes, sir. There are certain, as you're aware, when we, anytime that we offer our facilities to outside agencies, there are certain findings that we have to make in some boostful work to make certain that those are...
You got it, Bruce?
I do.
And we'll, we'll have them, they serve the sixteenth at eleven thirty, and y'all can make those findings and go forward.
We're also in process when it comes to the building we've secretly established with the Golden Bridge Building with the educational format that we have in place, also with Mississippi Department of Humanities. In case you didn't know, there's a million dollars out there right now as we speak with Mississippi Humanities, and it's only for the state of Mississippi. That money is designated just for the state of Mississippi. The application is due by December the thirtieth, so we're trying to work as speedily as possible. Some of those funds, because, uh, Ron Vaughn and I have been doing research on here in Natchez and also where there are many things that we needed in the educational perspective is the adult GED classes, and also not only adult GED classes, but preparing some classes for ACT, SAT. So that's gonna be one of the entities that exists also among the buildings that, hopefully that will be...
Thank you, all. Keep up the good work.
That's a good home.
You from here?
No, sir, I worked here for about fifteen years.
But you from Mississippi?
No, sir, Monroe. I lived here for fifteen years.
Okay.
You lived with that other school?
Which one?
The one we beat with this week.
Oh, no, I'm actually for Monroe, I didn't come there for...
I'm proud of y'all for doing this, you know, always good.
All right.
Thank you, all.
Okay, eight point fourteen.
Eight point fourteen, Mr. James, members of the board, is a request for a permission or, yes, grant us the ability to enter and to develop the resolution that's necessary in order to name the facilities. On last month, you all approved for those buildings to be dedicated in the memory of Ms. Daisy Newman and Henry Doctor Woods. Our board policy requires a formal resolution in order for that to happen, and we are asking your permission for Attorney Kiwi to go ahead and draft those resolutions.
So move.
Been moved in seven all in favor. Five zero. Now we got nine over in the morning. Now we got, now, oh, we have one straight. Now I'm going more into board counter, like I said, anything needs to be added, I'll take it off, give it to the secretary, she will handle it all, so we can tend to that day.
Mr. James, members of the board, updates. One thing that I do want to highlight, and I want to thank Mr. Byrd and Mrs. Butler for their effort. As you all are aware, we have been working tirelessly since when? June, Mr. Byrd?
You definitely.
Since June, remember there was a pause on the reimbursements for A R P S provided by the Federal Department of Education. Once that pause was lifted, there have been several pushes in order to ensure that we are able to recoup the funds, the federal funds that we, the funds that we spent in support of the federal budget or the federal plan of allocations that we received for A R P S. So thankfully, we have finally received our reimbursement for A R P S.
Excellent.
Thank you, Mr. Byrd and Mrs. Butler. There have been some issues with our camera system, with middle school and high school. We were contracting with a local vendor who has, because of some health challenges, not been able to support us with that. Officer Davis is currently working with another vendor in order to secure services, to upgrade and get those cameras back into operations. As you see, there is a quote, quoted amount, Mr. Byrd and his team along with Ms. Campbell are working to identify positive sources for us to get those things taken care of. All of our halo systems, which are fake detention systems, are not open operational thanks to Officer Davis and his push. There have been a number of activities that we have been engaged in or that we've had, that we've hosted throughout this first term, that we are proud of the push at Nathaniel's High School with their Veterans Day celebration, we've had Grandparents' Day at our elementary schools. So there have been a number of activities that have been occurring and a number of events that will be upcoming. The annual Christmas concert by our Performing Arts Department will be held December fifteenth. Six o'clock, and Nathaniel's High School, so we invite you all in our public in order to community to come out and celebrate the gifts and talents of our Performing Arts Department. We will also host several days throughout the district where parents can come and join their children in the teaching and learning that is occurring throughout the district. If I'm not mistaken, the initiative is called Making Mary in N A S D. So parents will have an opportunity to register to come and go to classes with their children. I think it's very important that parents understand the rigor of what students are now being asked to do. It is definitely not school as usual, as we are, were accustomed to when we were coming through, and so we want to afford parents the opportunity to come into the learning environment with their students to participate in the activities or some of the activities their children will be engaged with. So those flyers will be going out the week we return from Thanksgiving break. On the back of your flyer is the list of October homies for our Excellence in Action. One of the things that we committed to with our stakeholders from this past year's poll survey was making certain that we recognize and celebrate the employees of Nathaniel Adams School District who are exhibiting excellence in their everyday contributions to this district. And so there's a list of the persons that were recognized for October. They are nominated by their peers, and I think that's just awesome that other people recognize, their colleagues recognize their contributions to the Excellence in Action here in Nathaniel's High School District. Next month, we will celebrate those teachers who have already hit their first-term goal for benchmark number one. We are data-driven and data-focused, so we want to make certain that throughout the school year, we celebrate those teachers and those students who are making progress. As our theme says, we are raising the bar of excellence together, and we want to celebrate those people who are putting in the work to make sure that we continue to progress forward. Also, next month, we will provide some updates to the board because I think it's very important that you all understand the changes in the new accountability model and the action plans that we have in place in order to address those changes. The bar truly has been raised high. The cut scores for schools to earn A, B, C, D, and F designations have changed. I think approximately about fifty points difference now. So what it took for us to earn a C this year, it will take more for us to earn the B or the A that we are striving for for this school term. So we will provide the board updates so that you are aware of what that accountability model entails. That's all that I have, Mr. James.
Of course.
Yes, sir.
Regarding the damage to parents because of Nathaniel's High School after the Bane trip and the other damage to parents in the West, is there some particular reason? Are we responsible for?
One of those, we are working with insurance agents, they will work through their process with Mr. Byrd and Officer Davis. Now, yeah, we'll discuss that.
Okay.
Okay, board report.
As usual, everybody please stay safe.
At the Thanksgiving Day, we want to give the family.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I did want to say that Angels on the Glove, our students, our orchestra was playing, and they did a fantastic job, and I was very pleased that those instruments and the teacher and the activities, thanks to Mr. Field, his friends, they, they had a great presentation to way outside our community because our orchestra was playing.
Excellent.
So thank you so much.
So you know, most of us will be going to Jackson this weekend, and we have a chance to knock off that, those tigers in that Alabama State though, but I'm not gonna be like that. Go brave.
One thing I don't forget, our band traveled to Texas this past weekend to participate in a Battle of the Bane competition, and they came home with the winning trophy, so we are super excited.
I want to point out that, I guess eight or ten years ago, that was kind of, I think it'd be a little forward along that one. I was ashamed about it, okay? So it's come a long way from where it was.
That was the first year I was on.
It was the first year?
It was the first year.
It was what, if I, for lack of a better word, you know?
I won't say we were ashamed, but we were strongly concerned.
I know you know how to be politically correct, but I don't.
Mr. McAllister and his team have transformed, and we, I won't say transformed, but they have revitalized their band program, and now children are excited about being part, and we are, as in the words of Pastor Mary of mine, we are peacock fry.
And don't think that they came after Hanukkah coming, and so prior to parades, you have all these bands on the side, they going back and forth back. And all horns banned literally between South Pike and Mathis High. There's gonna be some scholarships given because they were looking. I was proud as a peacock.
I'm sorry, yes, sir. Working with our team, we've had conversations as we gear up, we will start preparing for graduation. We can't wait until May, we have to prepare ahead of time. And so in discussions with our team, we are proposing that graduation for the 2026 school year is held in the Nathaniel's High School Gymnasium instead of out on the field. That process is just very time-consuming, it is labor-intensive, and this affords us the opportunity to prepare for the graduation season. Once we set up for baccalaureate, we will prepare for the entire season. It will be a ticketed event, so that means each student will be afforded a specific number of tickets, and only those persons who have tickets will be allowed entry into the gym.
Do you anticipate any shortage of areas who have independent tent who may want to attend? Do you anticipate anything that, for the gym, the gymnasium?
So the gymnasium capacity is approximately what, what do you wanna say? Is it two?
Two thousand.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five hundred.
About twenty-five hundred people, that's the capacity. Now, of course, if I have thirty, forty family members that want to attend, we are not gonna be able to accommodate thirty or forty family members and friends for each graduate. So we will be able to accommodate, I think our calculation is approximately about ten guests for each graduate, and so that's the capacity that we will have.
So we don't intend to create dissatisfaction.
I'm quite certain that there will be some dissatisfaction with this process. Of course, we are moving from a stadium that has general openings or general attendance, admittance versus a ticketed event. But again, the process itself is just.
And if we do that, we're gonna give word to the student.
Yes, sir.
In time.
Yes, sir, as in now. Yes.
There will be a place so that other family members can watch the graduation? Didn't last time we had a live stream so that they can watch?
Yes, we have a live stream.
From another place, and I can make that real clear.
Yes, ma'am.
Off promotion, please. Off promotion, if you have a closed determination?
Second.
Moving seven, all in favor? Passes five zero. Closed determination.
Off promotion, if you're going to a debate session to discuss personnel, landau litigation, and any other.
Student.
Huh?
Student matters.
And student matters.
Second.